Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, June 7th, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Mr. Weeb, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamen, a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we have coming before us our Tax Commissioner, Mr. David Curry, with a resolution requesting approval of an amendment of the delegated authority to the Tax Commissioner to make final determinations regarding the waiver of assessed penalties and interest on unpaid ad valorem taxes. That will be Exhibit Number Two in your book. Good morning.
Good morning. Y'all got busy today and I appreciate being allowed to speak to you this morning. I'm here this morning to ask you to amend Resolution 9-18 that was passed by this board February 2nd, 2009. There's two specific sections in the resolution that I'd like to look at this morning. That's Paragraph Three. It said, "In each case where the Tax Commissioner makes determination to waive any portion of assessed penalties and interest, the Tax Commissioner shall certify in writing and under oath that he has reasonably determined that the default giving rise to the penalty was due to reasonable cause and not due to gross or willful neglect or disregard of the law." Paragraph Five, "The Tax Commissioner shall submit an annual report to the Board of Commissioners identifying all waivers granted pursuant to this delegate authority." On the surface, that may seem like a very good idea, and in theory, I agree with it. However, I want to explain to you this morning why it hasn't been a good idea in the past. On May 16th, County Attorney Ms. Wiley stood before you and asked you to amend this resolution. And to be honest, after I saw it on TV, I realized maybe I should've been the one to present it because I think there was a lot of questions. I think Commissioner Letta had some comments, and I think for the rest of you, you may have had questions, and maybe Ms. Wiley wasn't the best person to explain why I was requesting this. I don't need to explain to anyone here the difficult time this county has had over the last two or three years. Last week, you passed a budget, and each and every one of you that served before stated, "This is by far the worst budget you've ever had to do." I think anyone that watched it or was here in person could see the compassion and the heartfelt pull and the drain it had on you emotionally, and it was a very difficult decision. Some of the things that some people may not quite realize though is Henry County, we've lost four community banks in two years, between two to three years. The state of Georgia's lost 58 community banks. Nationally, we've lost over 340. Being part of a top-10 group normally is something we associate with being good. However, Georgia and Henry County has a dubious honor of being on the top-10 foreclosure list. Depending on which list you look at, Georgia ranks either sixth or seventh. Henry County ranks second in the state and 10th nationally. Bank repses. The Henry Herald reported earlier this year that we have the second-highest amount of bank repses in the nation. That's number one in the state. And you may ask, "What does this have to do with the resolution?" Well, it has everything to do with it. The FDIC has its own code, United States Code, its own law we have to follow. Once these local community banks fail, and just about every local community bank in Henry County owns property or has a mortgage here in Henry County. However, there are a lot of banks outside of our borders that still own property in Henry County. When these banks fail and they go back to the FDIC, the FDIC states it will pay interest only if it's secured by a valid lien. So when these tax bills are delinquent and they go back to the FDIC, the FDIC will pay the tax bill, but we've got to file a FIFA with Superior Court to secure the interest of the county and school and state. Under no circumstance, no matter what kind of lien you file, will they pay penalty. Bank repses, in most cases, bankruptcy court will not let you pay or collect penalties and interest. We received a check last week for $12 to go toward tax bill. It takes forever to pay a tax bill down, and they're not going to tack on fees, interest, and penalties. Some other reasons penalties and interest can be removed by law is changes in assessment from the assessor's office, new owner notification, postmarks. We send out 91,000 tax bills a year. 84,000 real property, about 7,000 personal property. Now, 80% of those get paid by escrow. We get a CD from the banks, we download the CD. By the time we come in the next morning, the property tax payment's paid. But that still leaves 20%, we've got to manually put into the system. And everybody's going to pay at the last minute. They're going to pay on the 15th or 16th if it's due on the 17th. We've got five clerks down there posting payments. We can't post all those payments in one or two days. We get them done usually by the 18th or 19th. But we take the postmark on the check, on the envelope. So if somebody pays their property tax bill and we're posting it on the 18th, we take the interest off because the interest goes on at midnight on the 17th. We have no magic switch going there to turn it off. The interest goes on. To generate this annual report, we don't have a way to go into the system and say, "Give me the tax parcels that's been waived for hardship reasons. We can't decipher FDIC from bank repse." We have to call Manitron. Manitron's the system we use for property tax payments. They get with their IT department, they go into our system and extract all the information from the backside. This is the list they sent me that I reported to you in December. There's 6,149 entries on here. What we then do with the list is divide it into five stacks, and you give it to five clerks, along with all the other work they do. It takes about three weeks to go by line item by line item to tell us that we couldn't charge a penalty or and/or interest anyway. The bulk of this list, by law, I couldn't collect anyway. This list comes up to about 1.4 million. And I know that number, that's a lot of money, but it's not accounts receivables that we could've collected. It's money we couldn't collect. We had to waive it for a reason. How much penalties and interest have we collected since I took office? Nine and a quarter million, 9.25 million. That's about 88% of all penalties and interest that's ever been applied to any bill we collected. This is money we couldn't collect, but I had to go through it because this resolution stated so, and give you a reason for each parcel. That's why I'm here before you today to ask you to omit Paragraph Three and Five from Resolution 9-18. Our office does not have the resources. We don't have the manpower to do this on a yearly basis. Our office receives, according to our own IT department, more phone calls than any other department in Henry County. We average about 17,500 phone calls a month. Our bank repse person, and I say person, most counties have a bank repse department. We have a bank repse person. In 2010, I stood before you and asked to allow me to take one person that was a property delinquent tax clerk, make her a full-time bank repse person. We've got the second-highest bank repses in the nation, and we've got it, we're handling it with one person. That's how efficient that office is. Henry County Tax Commissioner's Office, when we go to training, Department of Revenue typically uses us for the example, how others should follow. Another example of what we were doing last week, the Oglethorpe Examiners came in. And anybody out here in the audience and watching on TV, if you haven't heard of the Oglethorpe Award, you need to look it up. If you've got a business, you need to be pursuing for best practices, best processes. We had independent examiners come into our office and show us the best way we can improve our service to citizens and customers. And you are part of that customer group, you and the school board and state, everyone we send a check to each month. In theory, as I stated earlier, what the resolution, I know what the resolution wants. It wants me to give you a list of any and all penalties and interests that I've ever waived for hardship reasons. We don't waive many of those, very many at all. But what it creates is a mess for my office. It creates 6,149 entries we have to go through, line item by line item to give a, and that's what the resolution states, "In each case..." So if the FDIC states they're not going to pay it, I've got to tell you why. I've got to quote the law. With budget cutbacks and everything else, I'm asking you to reconsider those paragraphs in that resolution.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Curry or a comment? Mr. Aletta? And please, you're going to have to speak up, the mics aren't working this morning.
Okay. Mr. Curry, as you said, I made comments last time, and same comments, I guess, I'd make today. And you indicated that the report was done, and part of this resolution also states part of the reason not to do the report is because it's publicly available. Can you define what that means, publicly available? Because what I hear you saying, it is not publicly available based on the amount of work that you just said has to be done to get it.
Okay. This is a little bit of a rhetorical question. I don't expect you to have the answer, so... But has anybody got any idea how many times this list has ever been requested? Twice in the history of the Tax Commissioner's Office. One time last December, one time in the early 90s, or excuse me, late 90s. All of this information, if they want to know if David Curry pays their taxes on time, if I pay my tax bill on time, or if any of you pay your tax bill on time, it's on the web. You can look at it. Look David Curry up, look at my address. If you know my address, if you don't, it's under David Curry. My wife's name's Nicole. Look at it. See when I paid my property tax bill. If it's due on the 17th, I owe $1,000, and I paid it a month later, and I still paid $1,000, I got, somebody waived my penalties and interest for me. We're not keeping anything from the public. I want to be just as transparent as anyone else. But to do this work yearly, on the outside chance someone may or may not want the information, is not very efficient. Also, if someone files an open records request for this information, we're going to get it for them. In the late 90s, when they requested it, this resolution wasn't in place, and the prior Tax Commissioner provided that report to them. He provided that information. If it's requested, we want to give it to the people. But I don't think it's, it just doesn't make a lot of business sense to me to produce a list yearly if there's not an interest in it.
I guess the question is this. If one citizen decides they want to make an open records request, you're going to do exactly what presently is required by the previous resolution or whatever that gave you those duties. To me, it's not an issue of you're not doing the job, or you're offering, or whatever. To me, it's an open and transparency that says to the public, "These are what we gave, and nothing more than that." And if somebody does do an open record, request for an open records, you're going to have to go through the process anyways, and it only going to take one citizen in making that request and going through it, as you said you did there. And, you know, it's nothing more than an affirmation of exactly what you've done. It is not a questioning of what you did. It's a matter of saying, "Here it is. This is the amount, end of story, and it's over with."
And I understand that. But if you look at, if you look at the history, how many people's ever had an interest in this? You're telling me to do this on a year basis when someone may or may not ever... We know who requested the information in December. The list was provided. No questions were asked. No one cared, the individual didn't care to understand the information before it was sent out. The individual that requested in December sent it to actually the man that requested the first time in the late 90s, along with several other people. That gentleman at least had the decency to call me and say, "Please explain these numbers in further detail." He took a sampling of the list, gave it to us, and we gave detailed explanation why each and every one was waived. To me, it has nothing to do with hiding anything and not being transparent. I'm telling you now that if someone wants this list in the future, we're going to provide it for them. But to produce a list, to put on a shelf, when odds show us, no one's interested in the information anyway, that's a lot of work to be done. That's a lot of work to be done on the hopes that someone wants to see it one day.
I think when the figure is, was expressed, and you, I think you said, what, million four, million three?
A million four, which, it's not a million four that we could collect. It's a million four that was not collected.
And I think that's just the whole purpose of it. It just says, "This is as good as we can get. We've done our job. This is not going to get collected, there's, for all the reasons you gave." And as you said, questions weren't raised because the report was as thorough as it was to say, "These are the reasons why," and the issue was dropped. But at least the issue was dropped because you had the information to say, "Yes, it's a big figure, but these are the reasons, and there's nothing more we can do, and our judgment was such, and the judgment was correct." So, I mean, I'm just, I think, one way or the other, the report can and will be asked for. It's basically states for this county, for the commission, for everybody else, the number of dollars that maybe it goes to the point of how many dollars or how many, or how bad our bankruptcies and everything are. And next year, hopefully, that figure will go down and keep going down. So as a matter of record, it'll show, as bankruptcies come down, or all the other issues that you mentioned come down, the amount of money the county does not collect will be less each year.
Mr. Holder?
Just a comment, and I'll ask Mr. Curry this, but it's in response to Commissioner Aletta's comment about the report. I think there's quite a difference in an open records request in the compiled list. Open records request, the person requesting it has to pay for it, correct?
That's right. It takes man hours to produce it. You've got to produce it.
You are allowed, if there's an open records request, to charge the amount of man hours and material to produce whatever it is they're wanting, correct?
Absolutely.
Well, that, to me, makes a big difference because it's available if you wanted to pick out Reed Bowman, or me, or whoever, as far as checking our taxes. But if you wanted a compiled list, you have that ability now to step forward as an open request and pay for it.
Yes.
Is that not correct?
That is correct. We can't withhold any information from the public.
That's right. The law will not allow you to do that.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if there are no further questions or comments, you do have a resolution before you and a request from our Tax Commissioner to, and I'm going to read this, "A resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners amended the delegated authority to the Henry County Tax Commissioner to make final determinations regarding the waiver of assessed penalties and interest on unpaid ad valorem taxes, and I will entertain a motion on this item."
Madam Chair, before we do, could I ask a question or make a comment? In the resolution that you just read, and for some people who may not know, the Board of Commissioners can delegate authority, but they cannot delegate responsibility because the responsibility still lies within the governing authority. And this is true in anything. We can delegate authority to many different areas for whatever the work is that's before us, but we can't delegate the responsibility. And I think it's, it's not meant in words, that's just the way it is, and I want to make that clear.
All right, you have a resolution before you, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamen, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries 3-2 with Holmes, Stamen, and Holder in favor, and Bowman and Aletta in opposition.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, under Public Safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to use seized funds and asset forfeiture account funds to cover fees associated with the removal of vehicles. Our presenter is Chief Nichols of the Police Department, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing, Madam Chair, Commissioners? Approximately three years ago, our, the Police Department was physically located at 345 Phillips Drive. Behind 345 Phillips Drive was our Property Evidence Building at 347 Phillips Drive and our impound lot. Obviously, as y'all know, we moved to 108 South Zackenton Parkway approximately two and a half years ago, and when we did, we took our property and evidence and moved it into 108. We maintained our impound lot at 347 Phillips Drive. Well, recently, we had planned for our Narcotics Building to move into 347, and some changes emanated from that move, and we ended up having another department that needed that building at 347 worse than we did in the building that they were going to move into suited our needs for our narcotic division. So what happened was, we had to vacate our impound lot, which we had planned on using or utilizing, and we had to move to where the current Narcotics Building is located. In doing so, we had over 49 vehicles that we had to move. We also had four-wheelers, scooters, all kinds of equipment that we also had to move and relocate. In doing so, we incurred a cost of $2,985. I'm coming for you this morning to get authorization to pay that bill, which we had to do to move all that equipment, using my seized fund and asset forfeiture account, which is, by state guidelines and federal guidelines, is perfectly authorized to do.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the use of the seized funds and asset forfeitures in order to pay for the cost of moving these vehicles, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamen, second by Mr. Aletta, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is a proclamation. This proclamation is in recognition of Skip Floyd for receiving the Single Honorable Mention in the GMIS International Award. Whereas Skip Floyd Senior Applications Architect was nominated to receive the 2011 Outstanding Professional Award category during the 25th anniversary of the GMIS International Awards, and whereas Skip Floyd received the Single Honorable Mention Award in the 2011 Outstanding Professional Award category. And whereas Skip's outstanding communication skills enabled him to break down the complex language of computer programs so that everyday users of computers can grasp and understanding of the program's operations, as well as give him the ability to comprehend what citizens, elected officials, and management are referencing when they call with problems. And whereas since his employment in April 2008, Skip has continually contributed to the success of Henry County's technology services through his many projects and achievements, including these eight vital projects this year done alone. The Henry County Sheriff's Website, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Website, a Connecting Henry Database Website, the Custom Video Servers, the Sheriff's Intake Room Video Application, a Warrant Jail Look-Up Service, the District Attorney Video Capture, and Custom Service for E-Ticketing. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wants to express its sincerest appreciation to Skip for his outstanding contributions to the Technology Services Department of Henry County and his steadfast dedication to serving the citizens of Henry County this 7th day of June 2011 by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And Skip, if you're here, we would like to present this proclamation to you, and we All right, we're going to move on to Safety and Risk Management. At this time, we're going to have a discussion regarding the Tenant User Liability Insurance Program, or TULIP, another acronym for us to learn. And our presenter is Mr. Jim Wellman, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. What I've come to do for you today is talk a little bit about a tenant-user liability program, and I brought Ms. Ashley Ambercomby from Marsh Insurance to kind of explain some of the technical stuff. She is the administrator for ACCG's insurance programs. The tenant-user policy is a policy that when individual citizens want to schedule an event in one of our buildings, specific events, that they can go and get liability insurance to cover this event. As it is right now, there is no such program available to any of the citizens, so the county is really on the hook for any of the liability issues that may arise during the course of these events in these venues. And Ashley, if you would mind explaining a little bit more to this, I would appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is basically a mechanism for you guys to be able to take advantage of a master policy. It would be in the name of Henry County, but any tenants or users of your facilities would be able to buy into this policy, basically. So they would be, they would be also covered up under that policy. So there's no cost to the county to do this. This would be paid for by the users of the facilities, and the minimum premium for each user would be $100. And it's really rated, there are like four different categories based on the risk that they present because of the different activities that they could have at a facility. So of course, if it's like a wedding, a banquet, that kind of thing, there's low risk. And I think if you had maybe 100 or 150 participants in that, you're probably looking at about $100. That's going to be your minimum type event. But in the event someone is injured because of this activity at your facility, this would be the primary policy that would respond. So if you had, even if there are really no, there's really no responsibility for the county, this policy would defend Henry County as well as the user. It would be the first responder to any sort of event like that. Currently, without this, if there is any sort of liability that's presented from the user, the user's activity at your facility, they could call upon Henry County and say, "Well, it's because, you know, you let them have this activity at your facility." Whether you're responsible or not, you may have to incur some costs for defense, to defend Henry County and get yourselves out of it, even within your deductible. So it's a good way to put a first response, so to speak, apart from your own coverage. Let's see. So some of the benefits, the advantages would be that it's no cost to Henry County. The users would actually have to pay for it. You would know your coverage terms and conditions, so even if you've got some requirements now on your users of the facilities, and maybe they have the coverage and maybe they don't, maybe they've got some substandard coverage, you know, this way you would know who your carrier is, and you would know what kind of coverages and limits are available to you. It's also readily available and acceptable. It would be acceptable to you guys. And it's web-based, so it's an easy way to facilitate this program. You could have a link from your website into our website, which would enable them, and I think Jim gave you some screenshots. It's pretty easy for them to go in and say, "This is the event. This is the kind of activities we're going to have, the number of people that we're going to have at this event, such and such days." And it actually rates it for you online. You can buy it online with your credit card, and then it will present a certificate, not only to them, giving them comfort that they have coverage, but it would also give you, Jim, or whoever your representatives are within the parks and rec or with risk management, a certificate as well to say, "This event is covered up under the program." So those are some of the advantages. You also might want to establish some criteria because if it's, you know, a really, really small event, and you don't want to have the $100 minimum fee there, and you're not really worried about the particular risk, then you could, you know, have it for certain events of a certain size. So that's really up to you and whether, you know, where you want to put that into play.
What other counties are currently using this?
The only one that I'm aware of right now is Gwinnett County, and I would tell you for Syth County, who, we really don't have that many professional risk managers on staff within the counties, but there's one in Forsyth County that's looking at it as well. There was a recent Georgia Public Risk Managers Meeting where we talk about different liability risk and property risk, and this was presented as a topic. So that's why there's some generated interest in this too, because it does help to protect your budget by having this in place.
And typically, these would be things like sporting events or other events where some physical activity was taking place, not just a meeting where 25 people are coming together to talk about, you know, the school issues.
Right.
It would be actual, it's more in line for events that someone could potentially be injured in.
Right, right. It could be, even Jim mentioned some type of bull riding event. I mean, there's certain ones that we might have to individually underwrite and have to get carrier approval for, but like I said, there are about four different categories.
How do you think your premiums would line up? I know we have some large-scale events where an individual will rent the park for the weekend, and they're typically required to carry liability insurance for the event. Do you know how your premiums would match another carrier? If, I mean, would the folks coming through you get more of a discount because you do represent all the counties in the state? Would it be a benefit for them?
I would think that they would. I mean, I have compared it against other TULIP programs, because there are maybe two others that are out there that do TULIPS, and with those, we're very competitive. With others that have their own liability insurance, I mean, you've got some professional firms out there that are moving from place to place and doing their activities, their coverage may be completely sufficient for what you require of them. So they may not need to get any other additional insurance because their carrier already covers that, and therefore, they would not need to partake in this policy because they've already got it. But this is really meant for those individuals or those entities that really don't have sufficient coverage or don't have any coverage at all. And it just gives you that protection.
One of the other things that Ashley brought to my attention, and not picking on the bull riding people, but we were requiring right now possibly a million dollars per event to show that they have that type of liability insurance. According to the event, we're sitting up here at $4 million. They're sitting here at a million. We could be tapped for that additional $3 million. And so what we want to do is kind of look at what we've got in place, some of the programs, and maybe have a sliding scale per the type of event as to where, what we want to require from these people that are staging these events in the amount of liability insurance they should carry. We don't want to be the guy up here on the high end, and they're down here on the low end, and then somewhere in between we'll meet, and that's going to be us. Is that pretty much you?
I mean, I have seen some other counties, metropolitan counties in particular, that with their purchasing departments, they'll have some guidelines, some contractual guidelines to say if it's this type of job with this kind of risk, then we're going to require this, this, and this. And likewise, on the far end, if it's more hazardous, then you've got other requirements. So that might be something in addition to look at as far as the TULIP policy goes.
City board member have any questions on this item? Mr. Stamey?
Jim, do we have a minimum, I guess, the, what kind of liability would be on us for the minimum?
Right now, it looks like we're requiring a million dollars at the present time. Now, the county carries $4 million in liability insurance per event.
What kind of deductible would that be?
We carry $50,000 deductible on each incident.
If we had an accident at an event, and the vendor who rented the park couldn't pay the 50, we would be on the hook for the 50, correct?
Absolutely. After $50,000, then our reinsurance kicks in with more.
ACCG, and our local risk management agency.
And $100 would cover per event on a million dollar coverage for a weekend use?
That is a minimum premium. So each and every, let's say you've got this website that's available, and you've got one user who wants to have a, an event at the Nash Farms, for example, their minimum premium would be $100. And they would go through this rating online to say, "We've got 100 participants, we're going to do it this day, and this is the kind of activity we're going to partake in." Then, you know, it would rate it up, and it would give them the quote. Now, they don't have to buy it. You know, I think your goal at the end of the day is that they have it from somewhere that's reputable, and you've got good coverage terms and conditions. But this is a readily available mechanism for them to partake in if they don't have another avenue, and it would be really easy for them to go in and find out what their quote is on the spot. They could bind it. You could get your evidence to know that they've got this other coverage that would be called upon versus somebody coming after you instead.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Alata?
Going back to the 50,000 deductible we have, would their coverage with you be primary, and thus, we would not have a deductible if it did get into the excess of the 1 million on our policy?
It would be primary on the policy, yes.
So our deductible basically should be covered on the 50 grand within the first mill that their policy would cover, is what I'm asking, Jim.
I believe that. I'm trying to think of the way that the policy is worded, because certain types of policies do erode the deductible. I don't think, in this case, it would erode the deductible. I'd have to go back and confirm. But I think it would be your, I mean, this policy first, the TULIP, then if and when it went over a million dollars, it would be your 50, and then your coverage over.
Well, it depends on if our policy, right, Jim, if our policy is an excess policy over the million, or is the policy from dollar one with the 50,000 deductible? Because if our policy is a primary from dollar one to 4 million, and the deductible's 50, then, again, the first million should be covered as opposed to part of, as part of our deductible, I would think. If it's an excess policy, I can understand the 50 coming in over a million. So I think, something to look at, I guess, just to clarify that.
And we wanted to bring it before the board to see if there was interest in the board to go ahead and pursue this and come up with a resolution, and maybe some guidelines that we're going to establish as a county when we have these liability issues come up in purchasing things, contracts, and users of our events and our venues.
And I would say from Marsh's perspective, because we would design this website with Henry County's labeling, it would have your logo and be connected with your sites. It would be something that Marsh, one of our sister companies, would develop. They've already got the shell, but they would develop it for you, and then your users could go in and purchase that coverage. Because there is no cost to Henry County, what we would need from you guys is some sort of a commitment to help, you know, present this, let others know that this is available to them through the Parks and Rec, so that we can get some usage out of it and make it beneficial for them as well as for you.
So this is actually a non-action item today. What Jim is looking for is just a consensus from the board that you're interested in maybe looking at this a little more in detail and consider the possibility of putting this in place in the future. So it's not an action item. He just needs, he doesn't want to waste his time pursuing more information if the board's not interested in moving in that direction.
Basically, all you're asking is for us to have it available on a website or someplace so that when somebody wants to come to the county for a venue or an event, it's easier for them to say, "Here's where I can get my insurance," but they still have the right to go find any policy or bring their policy with them, as long as it covers whatever our required limits are.
Absolutely.
And I guess what the other thing we're trying to do is fill in this gap that's right there right now, take us out of the liability picture on some of these venues that are going on, and shift the liability from us to the user.
And putting some criteria in place so that you know which events you're going to require it for, and which events you may not require it for.
Because I think there's very few we currently require, there's very few events we currently require an additional liability policy on. Is that correct?
That's correct. I've worked with Tim Collier at Parks and Rec, and the major events, they're getting the liability coverage from the event holder. But we need to also look and see, is that enough liability to cover the, what we need? And so I'd like to further work with Tim, possibly work with the purchasing department on some of the contracts that are going out and say, "We need a sliding scale," ask them what the event's going to be and what the contract's going to be, and establish that, put it into a resolution, and go forward with this, so if the board so desires, excuse me.
Mr. Bowman?
Just for clarity, in Marsh's case, so your, that, this particular policy, it's, Henry County's named, so we're the recipient, basically, of the policy. Does that also cover the person that's having the event? So basically, we're both named as, as.
You're correct.
Okay, that's all.
Anybody else? Are y'all in agreement that we'd like Jim to provide some additional information on this?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Moving on to Capital Projects, we have a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment and to award a bid to construct the E-911 Center. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Seal bids were solicited to furnish all materials, labor, tools, equipment, services required to construct the Henry County E-911 Center in McDonough. This project is a renovation of an existing 20,500-square-foot building on Industrial Boulevard. There were seven responsive vendors who submitted bids. The bid tabs are attached to the resolution. Staff recommends the low, most responsive bid of Cooper and Company General Contractors of Coming, Georgia, in the amount of $1,849,000. Funding of $1.9 million is available in the Henry County E-911 capital account. Additional funding is needed and available to be moved from the Splotch III Domestic Violence Project in the amount of $300,000.
Can I ask you a question about this before I open it up to the board? You're moving $300,000 from one account to another, even though there's a million nine sitting there, and the bid came in at less than a million nine. Why are you moving 300,000?
Chairman, the construction part of the contract is the million 849,000. In addition, we have $102,000 worth of engineering and architectural fees, and there's some furnishings that we have to do in the building for the total of the 2.2 million. Again, the 1.849 is just for the construction of the building.
Do you know how much money was left in the parking deck?
400, I think it's 455,000, but I'll verify that number.
And did we reallocate that money to another project?
We have not yet, no ma'am.
Any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Alata?
I think you knew I was going to. I think you probably did as well, Ron. The 300,000 that's being moved from the domestic violence, anyways, there is, I think, I've got the latest 6.3 Splotch report. If you could clarify something for me, and I think this shows 385,000 left over from the parking deck, if this is what you're asking. But, so I understand the Splotch report, the domestic, or, excuse me, the Emergency Operations Center was originally in Splotch III, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it was budgeted for a million four. And then it was removed, like a lot of other projects, especially things like Senior Center for District Two. And expenditures have been made, but I noticed there's another funding source of a million four in here that was put in there, and leaves a balance of a million 244. I'm hearing, reading the million nines is available. I don't know if that means that we only transfer a million four to the million nine, or if there's another million four then top of this. We're dealing with two sets of funds, but obviously, for my purposes, money being moved at this point, I'm still looking for money for a senior center in my district, and moving it from that to the other is something I'm looking at as well.
The E-911 fund has 1.9 million dollars of money to help construct this facility. The bid came in, and the total budget was like 2.2, so there was $300,000 short. That's where the $300,000 from the, one of the accounts that in Splotch moved into that account to help finish construction of that facility.
But the original budget was a million four. Is that, are we saying now that the original budget or anticipated cost to build this or do completely put it together was a million four, and now we're looking at something in the tune of 2.2 million?
That is correct. The million four was to construct a facility from the ground up. We wound up being able to buy this facility and to put this facility into operation, it was 2.2 million.
I guess, how was the million four put together that we would be that far off, I guess, and now coming up 900, 800,000 short to the original estimate that was put in here? I mean, what was the difference? Was it building a bigger facility, or?
The, I think the issue that happened before was, we were looking at a, you know, a 20,000-square-foot building, and now we have a 30,000-square-foot building. Not that we were willing to buy a 30,000 square, a bigger building, but this building came available at a very reasonable price, and so once you bought it, to build it out to the extent that it needs to be built out, it's going to cost 2.2 million.
So you're saying we bought an additional 10,000 square feet to what we originally thought we needed?
And I don't know the original size of the original, you know, concept of this building. They came up with a dollar amount per square foot, is what I basically remember from the committee that was set up years ago. And so that's how, Splotch is paying 300,000 of the 1.4 million. And originally, we did say that we were only going to use 1.4 million in E-911 dollars, but then, you know, when the cost of the construction came back in at 1.9, you know, I don't, you had to come up with the additional funding.
Mr. Holder?
Also, in posing this as a question and a comment at the same time, well, one of the reasons for the purchase of the larger building is the fact that this facility is going to be multi-use, because you're going to have, part of it is transit and part of it is E-911. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
These are no funding sources, are from two different sources. We're actually taking two and putting it into the one, 130,000-square-foot facility. Not in it, but I mean, on the same location.
Right, on the lot.
On the same piece of property, not the same building. But that's, I would think, is going to be one of the reasons for the additional cost. And of course, it was a good buy at the time.
I think another thing, Commissioner Holder, was, we were talking about also moving our emergency response, disaster relief, emergency response. We did not have that in the original new 911 Center, and we're able to put this all in one location. So there's a lot of issues that played into the purchase of this building.
I would like to ask Don Ash to come up, because I think Don can probably tell us more about it than all of us sitting here speculating about it as far as, the original plan for, from Splotch for E-911 was just to come out where it was, go up and.
Just build a floor on top of it. That's exactly right.
Good morning, yes. Let me start off, initially in Splotch III, I believe the original budget that we submitted to that committee was at 2.2 million, and it was cut in that committee process to 1.4. But the existing plan was to only build at the existing center at the Sheriff Department and extend the facility. But we basically have extended that facility three times, and there's no more room to extend it, and it wasn't cost-effective to go up in that building. And then the property came available at 526 Industrial, which presented an opportunity to put the transit on part of the property, as well as the 911 and Emergency Operations Center. And additionally, part of that construction is for hopefully a future plan. If the county choose to institute this in-house radio shop, which will, over probably five or six years, will bring back a lot of revenue, we've did some additions to accomplish that as well in this facility.
Mr. Stamey, did you have a comment?
I just want to echo something. I remember, Don, we've talked about this several times, but like you said, they were just going to punch out the walls of the present center you were at, but.
Correct.
Logistics-wise, when this particular property came available, we picked up five acres of land. I don't think that building's 30,000 feet. I would think.
No, actually, the size of that building is actually about 22,000 square feet.
22,000 feet, and a chunk of that is unfinished. So we were going to put transit in there with a future radio center in the back to allow Don to do repairs. That's what it was bought for. Logistic-wise, you were going to cable, underground cable the.
Exactly.
Right underneath the power lines.
What we will do in this new facility, we will leave our prime radio equipment at the existing facility and just run a fiber line to that. It's cost-restrictive to move all that equipment over to that facility. But, and additionally, as the property lays where we're at now, there's only about 50 parking spaces for the entire jail staff. So when they did the last addition to the jail, there's no way for us to move to even accomplish letting jail get intake in and out. So that was another reason we moved to the additional.
And it also made absolutely no sense to take the roof off of that building and go up.
But, and additionally, as the property lays where we're at now, there's only about 50 parking spaces for the entire jail, jail staff. So when they did the last addition to the jail, there's no way for us to move to, to even accomplish letting jail get intake in and out. So that was another reason we moved to the additional.
And it also made absolutely no sense to take the roof off of that building and go up when it was going to be cost prohibitive. I mean, we were going to end up with less square foot and spend more per square foot by pulling that off, because we had to go down and put new foundations in, in the existing facility to hold the additional weight of the, of the floor that we was going to put on top. So it was, while it could be done, it didn't make any sense to do it at all. And when this other piece of property became available, it made the most sense, because like you said, you didn't have to move everything. You could fiber optic cable it over, and it could be retrofitted. I mean, that's, that's where all of us came from. Because we looked at it, I mean, I actually went over there with an architectural firm and looked at going through, and by the time we looked at it with structural engineers, I mean, it was, it was going to cost $300, $400 a square foot to punch through the existing floor building to put new foundation work in, and then go above that and to build another building on top, and keep you in operation and dry at the same time. It was logistical nightmare, really.
Now, Chairman, also the hidden benefit is the future administration's office, some of the stuff for the sheriff's department will revert back to that old building, correct?
I, I think so. We planned just to keep a small piece of that property, and I, I think the sheriff has a desire to take over the remaining, probably 7,500 square feet of that building.
Especially the parking spaces?
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to approve a budget amendment and award the bid to construct the Henry County 911 Center in McDonough, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is under SPOLOST, a resolution requesting award of a bid for construction of the box culvert repair on Flippin Road at Pates Creek. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOLOST Transportation Project Director, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Board members. Flippin Road, Pates Creek is a designated SPOLOST III Transportation Project. Seal bids were solicited for the construction of the box culvert repair on Flippin Road at Pates Creek. Four seal bids were received and reviewed. Excuse me, I can't hear myself. Four seal bids were received and reviewed. Staff recommends the low bidder, North Georgia Concrete, in, in the amount of $93,267,000. $93,267,000 funding is available in this project budget.
Rocky, I just have one quick question on this. Is this, should this culvert be considered a stormwater project versus a SPOLOST project?
It is under the road. I think stormwater goes everything that is outside road, rightways, as far as my understanding, and it was a SPOLOST, it was in the SPOLOST list. But as far as, as far as stormwater, stormwater deals with everything outside county rightway, and this is inside the, the rightaway of the road. We're more likely to use those funds if we cannot use those.
Mr. Romero, I don't believe stormwater knows where the rightaway is, though it goes under that roadway then. I think that's an issue that we certainly have to address in the future, because just to say that this is stormwater and you're responsible for this area and that area, it has to be a coordinated effort somehow, because stormwater is going wherever it goes.
Right.
And like I said, it doesn't know where a rightaway is, or city limits, or anything else, with property line.
Mr. Stamey?
Will you have to close this road for a while?
I think all the work should be done with lane closures. The, the repair consists in, just the wing wall on the school side, if you're familiar with, with the area. The wing wall has separated from, from the, from the box, so we have to put some tiebacks and do some repairs to, to fix that, in order for us to, it's easier to repair it now versus waiting to have a big storm and, and then we lose the box. That's what we're here for.
Mr. County Manager, have y'all given any more consideration to looking at the use of the stormwater funds and what we would need to do to allocate those? Because we're having issues like this all over the county. There's going to come a point where there's not going to be any SPOLOST money to do these projects, and we're going to need the funding from some source. And as Mr. Holder said, that's stormwater. It goes where it goes.
Yes, we have, and, and we've looked at it more in regards to Henry County DOT projects than SPOLOST, but this is a good example of a continuation of a legitimate stormwater project on our rightaway, which could definitely be paid for out of stormwater funds. And we will, we will have that for you, because we anticipate, we wanted to assist our Henry County DOT in, at the start of next year's operating budget.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? If not, Mr. Aletta, we have a resolution before us, and since this is your district, I will look to you for a motion.
Make motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to release contingency funds for the construction of the Rock Quarry Road Bridge over Norfolk Southern Railroad, and this is going to be Exhibit Number Six in your book.
Rock Quarry Road Bridge is a designated SPOLOST III Mayor Transportation Project. Henry County BOC passed Resolution Number 10-272 on December 20th, 2010, to reallocate SPOLOST dollars reimbursed to SPOLOST by our funds for Eagles Landing Parkway. Rock Quarry Road Project received $9,166,989.75 in reallocated SPOLOST dollars to be used once Eagles Landing Parkway Project is substantially completed and within budget. The current, current budget for Rock Quarry Road is $11,327,235. SPOLOST recommends the approval to release $4,330,535.14 of the $9,166,989. That will leave in contingency for Eagles Landing, an amount of $4,836,454.89. We believe this will be more than enough money to cover any shortfalls on the Eagles Landing Project. Currently, we're about 65% complete on Eagles Landing. We're looking, that we, we are on schedule as well, and we're looking to complete this project in 10 months, roughly around April of 2012.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I have several. Rocky, and I know you, you mentioned the fact that we're about 65% complete, and we've probably, from a payment standpoint, we're probably 55% paying out. We have a really good idea of where our contingency is.
Correct.
I think, and, and actually, I don't think, I think I know, but I've, I've ran that, you know, I go up and down that road every day. So, the hard work, as far as anything coming up that, that might be unforeseen, we've al, we've got, we're ready to put asphalt on 90% of it. So, the contingency factor is really not, we've got that one bridge left to do down by the wetland area, and then we're finishing up everything. We've already drove the pylons and poured the concrete for the bridge up over the railroad tracks.
Correct.
There's nothing up there that's going to jump up and bite us. So I, you know, we're, we're more than covered under what we're talking about doing. So, I just wanted to make that plain, and, and the February of 12 looks very good on completion. As long as this weather continues to hold out, so.
And it has helped a lot. We've done a lot of, if you've been up, and I know you go there every day, there's a lot of progress. We're looking at starting paving next month and shifting traffic, so.
They only have just a little bit of curb and gutter left to do. I mean, actually, they could be paving today, but I mean, we don't tell them how to do their job, but I mean, the bottom line is, they've got their bases in and they're ready to start, so. Madam Chair, there's no, you know, everything looks good, there's, there's, in, in this case, we would have probably, of the remaining dollars, we'd have like a 50% contingency still, still in play.
I have to say, I read a comment this week that was really comical, and Mr. Holder will appreciate this. We actually had a citizen that complained that he was tired of all the road construction. But I can remember a time in Henry County where we didn't have much of anything going on, and so, we've gotten to a point now that citizens are recognizing we're, we're making a lot of progress in our road projects. Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bowman, one other comment. A good possibility, without that air money, which is similar to money from the federal government, we wouldn't even be bidding on this today, correct?
They would not be a bridge.
And this is a huge...
There would not be a bridge over Rock Quarry Road if that money hadn't have come through.
And this has such, been such a huge safety issue for, you know, ambulances and medical personnel trying to get to the hospital from the backside. I mean, this is a huge benefit of the money that we received almost a year ago.
That's correct.
And Commissioner Stamey, it also, it also helps in our, in our fire station relocation, where we, where we're building a new fire station, replacement station for the one that's about to fall in on top of them over in Stockbridge, and it's going right there at that bridge, so it allows them easy access to and from, and to get back over that bridge and get into the hospital. So it's, it's something that has been needed for an awfully long time, but it's been prohibited when, you know, we didn't have the money in the past, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have before us a resolution to approve the release of contingency dollars for the construction of the Rock Quarry Road Bridge over the railroad tracks. And Mr. Bowman, since this lies in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting award of the bid for the construction of the Rock Quarry Road Bridge over Norfolk Southern Railroad, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Seven.
Seal bids were solicited for the construction of Rock Quarry Road Bridge over the Norfolk Southern Railroad. Eight seal bids were received and reviewed. Staff recommends the low bidder, GP Enterprises, in the amount of $4,33,184.34. Now we do have the funding, since you passed the previous resolution, now we do have the funding for it.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Chair, I'm going to have a couple of comments on this one. GP Enterprises is the low bidder, and I think there was some concern over GP having Eagles Landing Parkway, Hudson Bridge Road, the bridges there, and then continuing with the bridges, the bridge over the railroad tracks, and their bridge work is subbed out to a different contract, and they don't do their bridge work.
They don't, and it's actually a different contract sub than the Eagles Landing, so it's a completely different sub. And also Hudson Bridge, if, for the people who have been through there, we're, we're pretty much done with that project.
I think we're in the punch list stage of the Hudson Bridge side.
We are, we are. We're on the, trying to finish some striping and punch out.
Well, and this was a concern, obviously, it was a concern earlier with us, because they had gotten so much work, but it, it appears that they've done, you know, and this could jump up and bite me, obviously, because they're not done, but to date, they've done a very good job of what they're doing. So, I thought I'd bring that up. But I just wanted to be sure that we talked about the fact that they've got those projects we're trying to get done, make sure that they can handle the other one, too.
And just to, to add to that note, Hudson Bridge was finished on time, just to, just let you know.
Questions or comments? Mr. Bowman, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to GP Enterprises in the amount of $4,33,184.34, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve? Second by Mr. Aletta, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for the Rock Quarry Road Transportation Project, Exhibit Number Eight.
Due to the construction of this project, the Rock Quarry Road Bridge, it would be necessary for Georgia Power Company to relocate a portion of its facilities. A utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company is needed. The estimated cost to relocate the Georgia Power Company facilities is $423,351. Georgia Power Company requests reimbursement of about 100% of the actual relocation cost. Funding is available on this project. And just to let you know, all the poles that are existing there from Georgia Power, they're outside the rightway. So, we did our investigation with our attorney, and after going back and forth, it was determined that they have the prior rights, so because of that, we have to have this agreement if we want to move forward with the project.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I actually apologize for having so many, but these are all on the same project. Rocky, the Georgia Power portion is, doesn't have anything to do with the transmission line portion, correct?
That is correct. We, we already passed, the board passed a resolution to, to move those poles for the transmission, but there's also 32 poles that are Georgia Power in conflict on this project also as well, so it's kind of two different companies, but...
They're, they're similar utility, but I don't know that, you know, none of these, these are two different.
Right.
The other issue is approximately, Rocky. How much money has the utilities portion, how much money is the utilities portion? You don't have to hit it down on the number, but what do we look at on utilities just on this project?
We're close, just, just on the two powers, you're looking at around close to 700, 750. We still have to do some water and sewer, but that's the city, and we, hopefully, the city will, will move those at, at no cost to the county.
I think the point may, trying to make the point is, is just the, just the one that we just passed, the $4 million, I mean, that's, that's just the construction of the bridge.
Correct.
We're spending another million dollars to relocate utilities, and we don't really know the number yet that we'll be spending for, you know, to buy rightofway and property in order to do this. I, I think it's important that the public know that this, this bridge is going to cost well in excess of $6 million by the time it's done. And that's, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but that, I felt like that we should make that known, that, you know, hey, we're not getting this bridge, we're getting the bridge for $4 million, but, but there's a lot of other things that come into play, and I've been asked on a number of occasions why it's taken me so long to get something out and bid on this bridge. Well, it, it don't happen overnight. There's a lot of entities that we have to deal with in order to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Bowman, you have before you a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power, and since this is in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Aletta, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, we have a resolution requesting authorization to transmit the annual update to the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element. Our presenter is Breka Johnson, Planning and Zoning Department, Exhibit Number Nine. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, Board. Yes, the Short Term Work Program and the Capital Improvements Update for 2011 to 2015 is before you to be transmitted to the ARC and to DCA for review, according to the Minimum Planning Standards Act and the Local Comprehensive Planning established by the Georgia Planning Act. The Short Term Work Program is for the purpose of scheduling specific activities and actions that local government intend to address, and needs and goals that are identified within the plan. We have... And in order for us to maintain our qualified local government status, we have to annually update our Short Term Work Program and our Capital Improvements Element. And I thankfully have had wonderful, wonderful departments in Henry County to work with the Planning and Zoning Department to pull all this information together. I want to thank everyone who's out in the audience and the departments who have contributed and submitted their input on this plan. Everybody was cooperative and wonderful to work with. I do have one update to the plan, which was pointed out to me, and it's on page 14, under transportation heading. It's Item 165. That is a duplicated line item, and it's already located under miscellaneous transportation projects earlier in the document. So that will be taken out of that. Also, we have scheduled city meetings with the City of Hampton, which will be tonight, to adopt, to transmit the document to ARC, and also the City of Stockbridge, to be transmitted on June 13th. I do have copies available for anyone in the public who's interested in reviewing the document, and they're also available in our office. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I have one quick question, and I'm sure the other board members have had an opportunity to look through projects in their area. Again, on page 14, Item 163, Jamaica Drive, the cost estimate was $110,000, and it's, the funding source was capital funds, and it says "Design Complete." And I, was that not for a culvert replacement in, on Jamaica Drive, and has that project been completed? So it has not been completed?
No, it is, we've just started it within the last...
No, it is, we've just started it within the last week or so.
Did anyone else notice anything in the projects listed that needed corrections or updating?
Madam Chair, I have one comment.
Mr. Stamey?
Breka, just for the record, I'm sure me and Commissioner Holder both get a lot of comments concerning Race Track in eighty-one. For the record, that is a GDOT project, correct, just handling the construction, right?
I believe so.
We handled right away, and I think they're doing construction, correct? Okay.
Anyone else? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the transmittal of the annual update to the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, we have April twenty-first and May the fourth, and we will take these separately, as we had one commissioner absent on the May the fourth. Looking at April twenty-first, I had a couple of little minor grammar changes. Are there any additions to be made to the minutes of April twenty-first? If not, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. On the May fourth minutes, Mr. Holmes was not present for that particular meeting. I did have a couple of grammatical corrections. Are there any additions to be made to the minutes? Okay, if not, I need a motion to approve these minutes. Motion by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak must sign up with a county clerk prior to the meeting, and they must give their name, address, and specific topic. Each person will be allocated five minutes to address the board. We have three citizens sign up for public comment this morning, and I'm going to call you one, one at a time. And the first one is Pastor TJ McBride of ninety-six South Zack Kenton Parkway of McDonough. And Pastor McBride is here to speak to us about budget cuts for Life Management Solutions. Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to speak on behalf of our church. We understand that there was, the budget had to be cut, and we understand that Life Management Solutions was a program that had to be cut. But what I want to do is just voice our concern for that cut. Life Management Solutions has really helped a lot of families in our local church, particularly five particular families that were actually going through some juvenile cases, and also divorce, and all of that thing. And I understand, you know, what you all have to do, but I do want to put it out there that I think we need to really consider, you know, the programs that we are cutting, because it's really, really helping a lot of families in our community. I know for a fact, as a pastor, I have to deal, I have to deal with a lot of one-on-one issues with a lot of families. The economy has put a lot of pressure on a lot of families, and, and we have to deal with a lot of juvenile cases. I can't tell you how many kids I have to go see, and, and how many school meetings I have to go to, to deal with our young people. And so Life Management Solutions was, was really a blessing for not only just our church, but the whole community. And so I would like us to just kind of reconsider, you know, how we're, you know, doing the budget cuts and everything, because this is really important for the families in this county. I can truly say that Sandra Reagan just has really gone over and above to really assist a lot of families in this county. And I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. I know that going on into the future, hopefully, we can put together something, you know, like Life Management Solutions, or even something greater. And I want to offer, you know, my services, I've talked to some other pastors, and we would love to get together and maybe sit down and talk with you all, is what we can do, because it certainly takes a lot of pressure off of ministers that are trying to do so many different things. And to have a program like that, that can really minister to the youth, and minister to marriages, and, and help keep families together, that's a, that's a great program. And so I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, and I would love to be of any help or any assistance as we move forward in the future with keeping programs like that active in Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor McBride. The next individual that has signed up is Ricardo Hill of sixteen zero one Gallup Drive in Stockbridge, and Mr. Hill is going to speak on Life Management Solutions.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ricardo Hill, and my reason for being here is because I want to saddle back with what the pastors spoke about in regards to life management solution. I brought this poster board here so that way I can identify, so everybody can not only hear my voice, but read what I have to say. And life management solution, the village slash program, that brings forth life solutions, cares, does something to help the families of Henry County. And my request is that we continue to help the families in Henry County. By doing so, my perception of the panel is a bunch of beautiful people. Your perception of myself is an individual who's standing before you, dressed in a casual attire. But I can be someone like you, sitting back there, who has situations within your home or within your community. And what Life Solution Management has done for my family, my wife, myself, my grandson, has helped us to identify to certain things that have transpired in our past, which brings forth problems within our community for our future, with our children, grownups, loved ones, whatever. It's very important that this program is identified to continue to build our, our community for the next year to come, because I'm identifying that it's already a done deal as far as the program itself. But what we have to do is continue to identify what, as a family, is concerned for our community, how we can continue to build, so that way Henry County can continue to prosper. Without our family being structured in a positive way after problems have occurred in our past, our community will continue to go down. And Henry County is a positive community. That's why I chose, my wife chose, to move into Henry County. I have a great job, my wife has a great job, but things have transpired in our family where we needed the assistance, and the assistance was there. To take away the assistance would be creating more problems, not helping the situation, but bringing it down, and it's important. And I charge everybody to identify back into your own house, into your own community, and identify that what's important is not cutting something out that helps, but build on something that helps. And life solution, for me, for my family, for everyone of you all that identify, our senior citizens, identify our children, our senior citizens is our knowledge, our children is our future. And without our future, we're going to have problems. Without our senior citizens, there's no growth, there's no knowledge. In saying all that, my time is almost up, but I want, I would love for everyone to identify and look back at this program for the next years and years to come, because Henry County is already established with incoming problems. We want to build from inside and bring it out. And we can't do that if we're going to cut out what helps. We don't need to keep building for, how can I put it? We don't need for our future to keep going in the wrong direction, where the state has to take responsibility. We have to take responsibility. With that being said, Madam Chairman, thank you for listening, and Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We appreciate your comments. The final speaker this morning is Karen Benedict of one twenty-nine Lost Forest Drive in McDonough, and Ms. Benedict is going to speak on Life Management Solutions as well.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Board. I come to you today to represent my family and the personal impact that Life Management Solutions has had with me, my husband, and the communication that simply exists within our family. I've known a few of you over the years, and, you know, Glenn and I are average citizens. We moved to Henry County from a neighboring county because of the school system, as our kids were younger, and our church relocated to the county. So when we, when we came here and we got involved, we realized that this is actually, even though we're a really large county, we are a great community, and that's one thing that we hold really high in regards to Henry County. When we were having problems within our family, and it was more a specific issue of things that I won't, you know, involve you guys in, but something had happened to one of our children in a neighboring county, and that's where all of these issues within our family exacerbated. We had gone through numerous programs to try and change the facet of our family dynamic. Glenn and I have been married for seventeen years. We did not want to throw that away, because we couldn't figure out what was going on. We live in a nice, quiet little neighborhood, a couple of police officers, chef deputies live in our neighborhood, so I contacted them, just kind of, I sort of thought there had to be a resource, as great as our county is, there had to be a resource out there that I just wasn't tapping into. And that was earlier this year, and when I was introduced to Life Management Solutions and spoke with the people in the program, you know, Glenn and I were like, oh, my gosh, we finally have an opportunity for some sanity in our house. The program, where I understand and I respected the decisions that all of you have to make to govern our county, and I understand that they are hard, hard decisions. I basically want to come to you as an appeal for the rest of the families in the community whom, number one, may not know that LMS existed or exists, but number two, in the future, when you are looking at your funding for maybe two thousand and twelve, know that this program is solid, know that the program teaches things not only to, you know, my husband and myself, you know, you would think, oh, you're grownups, you should know what to do. You know, some things happen in our lives as children that we're unaware of, and we don't really know that that is manifesting all of the things that are going on. LMS helped our particular family identify the root causes of our problems, and helped us change within our family of four, the absolute dynamic. Our house today compared to seven weeks ago, one hundred and eighty degrees in the opposite direction, but in the right direction, and we have LMS to credit for that. So in the future, when you're thinking about the community programs that we have to offer our community, I would just like to appeal to you to, to put this back in the public spotlight. Let's, let's talk about it. It's just something that needs to be out there to serve our community and our youth. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them very much, and most of the board members have had an opportunity to go over and participate in some of the, the programs of life management, we're very familiar with it, and an excellent program, I agree. And it was a very tough decision on the board's part to cut any of our programs, and unfortunately, in the economy that we were in, we were not left with a whole lot of options. But Pastor McBride, I'll do everything that I can to work with you and the other pastors in the community to see if we can find some way within the community to fund this particular program, because it has been very helpful. And I know, over the years, I've gotten a lot of emails and comments from citizens who have been helped, and their families have been helped. And so I will work with you any way that I can to try to bring attention to this, and hopefully get some funding to continue these services to help our families, because Mr. Hill is absolutely right, the children are our future, and we need to invest wisely. As the old saying goes, they will be choosing our nursing homes. And so we, we know that they'll be sitting in these seats as well, and we need to train our children well, and give them everything they need to be successful in their future. But thank you all for taking time to be here this morning. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything for public comments?
I just have one request from our senior services staff. It seems like it comes every summer. With the heat and the hot weather, we have an awful lot of homebound senior citizens without air conditioning, and the senior services staff would like us to put out an appeal to the public for donation of fans for these individuals. Very dangerous situation, doesn't look like it's, it's going to let up anytime soon, and I would just like to make, make that appeal to the public for fan donations for our seniors at home.
And if they wish to donate contributions, financial contributions, I know that we'll have some folks that'll be able to go out and purchase those fans. Henry County has a nonprofit organization, it's called Henry First Incorporated, so any check that's made out to Henry First Incorporated is tax deductible for charitable purposes. And I guess folks can contact us on the website, or seven seven zero two eight eight six thousand for further instructions on how to get those donations in.
They can go through Susan Craig at Heritage, or HR, or Don Ash at nine one one.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, the upcoming meetings and events, and I want to announce that today also, we have a joint meeting at four o'clock with the Board of Education here in the community room, for the purposes of discussing the redistricting of the commission seats and the Board of Education seats, based on the new numbers that have come in for the census. And I also want to make sure that everyone understands, we are not talking about attendance lines for schools, because I don't, I have a feeling we would have no seating available in this room if citizens thought that that was the reason, where a meeting has nothing to do with school attendance lines. Also, Monday, June the twentieth at nine a.m., Tuesday, June twenty-first at six thirty p.m., those are both regular board meetings. Monday, July fourth, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Tuesday, July fifth at nine a.m., we have a regular board meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of pending potential litigation, personnel matters, and land acquisition.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.